This work session's a order. Okay, we're on. So, good evening, everybody. And let's start with the minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All right. Motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Another final job.
Yeah.
Well done.
Okay.
On a roll.
Tonight's agenda. Let's go to item number one to see if we have any issues that need to be clarified. Anybody have any questions for clarification? They're pretty interrogating.
Fifty plus just because it's on the road.
Yeah, just because of the variation of the lot.
All right. Number two. The one foot higher fence than allowed. Because of a hot tub. So, anybody? Pretty straightforward as well.
Did anybody get? I took some pictures.
He saw a couple pictures.
Yeah, I thought we had them before. Maybe I just saw it.
You know, I didn't know if you had them. And I happened to be over doing an inspection two doors down. I saw they put it up, so I stopped over and took a picture.
Am I to email this?
Yeah. I'm just saying.
It looks familiar. I didn't know if I, when I went out there, I saw it or you had sent it. Okay. Looks a little r- you can see through this.
Yeah. And so, any other questions on that? Again, pretty straightforward. And the last one? We did an email this afternoon on this. From a neighbor.
Would you give us a little background?
Yeah. Why don't we give a little bit of the history on this, Harold, that we made? So, we understand.
Of the property?
Sure. Yeah. We had plenty of time.
This property was formerly owned by John Freckleton. And back in the early 90s, I believe it was, he sold it to Kevin Sleeman, who operated it for a while. And he became ill and could not continue to run the operation. And the family sold it to Kristen. And she had since been operating the property since, I think it was 2010.
So, but, but did you say, or did Freckleton build that horse stable?
Freckleton built the barn. Kevin added an addition onto it that is, comes out at the front.
Hey Pete?
That image that you, that I gave to you tonight?
Yep.
You see where the address is?
Yeah.
That's the addition that Kevin put on.
Okay. They're in the red, yep. Because he could.
That did receive an appearance.
They built this way.
Yeah, because it's a few feet.
Right. Yeah. You see that in that?
So, that's on the southern end of the barn? Where the actual four digits are, 3476?
Yes.
Okay. Because that does jut out a little bit at the end.
Right.
So, what is he saying when he says he lost his trees when he sold it? What trees did he lose there or where on this map?
Oh wait, no. Who are you talking about when you say he?
Freckleton.
Sure.
Freckleton is the one that said in here.
An email, yeah.
I'm not entirely sure. I had some troubles trying to piece together John's history. And my, my, my best answer is, I believe he went to the planning board to break this parcel that is now 3476 into the parcel that it is. And at a planning board work session or project review committee or something, he didn't comply with the required 100-foot setbacks as the barn stood. So, they told him, "You need to submit an application that complies." I didn't find any record that he'd gone to the zoning board to ask for relief from any of the standards.
And I'm sorry, but again, we were talking about Sleeman and all of a sudden we're talking about Freckleton. Who are you talking about?
John Freckleton.
Okay.
Because this, this history goes back into the early 90s.
Okay.
And I could find no evidence that he made an application to ask for relief from the requirements.
For variance.
Right. He just says here, "He was told that he couldn't get a variance." He didn't say he tried.
He tried. I mean, I gave him the benefit of the doubt because I think he was, he was preparing this email very hastily because I believe he came back in town yesterday and he found his postcard. And I think he was trying to put together something to get back to the board tonight because he's got a conflict with another meeting that he was going to. But even, I searched decades of records from the zoning board and I couldn't find any evidence that he, he made any attempt to make an application to be granted relief from the requirement, other than the fact that he's making a statement that the staff or the planning board probably told him, "You don't comply."
Yeah. Hey, do you?
And I'm sorry, Goosebumps.
No, you go first.
When you say he's making a statement, you're talking about where he says, "The town forced me to spend tens of thousands of dollars to comply."
Right.
Okay. All right. And then he goes on later and he complains about losing income because Sleeman exercised apparently some clause in the lease that allowed him to purchase. Right? That's how I, I don't know how that's relevant.
Because then we'll get a private party.
Yeah. I don't, I just want to make sure I'm not understanding how it could possibly be relevant to this application. I don't see it.
Well, that goes to my question, Dan. He must be saying where the little thing there of his trees that he still has, okay? He must've had more trees closer to the barn and then, you know, here. Like here, Danny. And then he had to do it to get the 100-foot. I don't know, but I mean, I don't, you know, he says 50%. I just can't, can't possibly be.
Which just sounds like the guy bought it.
Yeah, right.
Or potentially here on the back corner where it's all clear cut.
No, here?
Maybe part of that was purchased too. You know, maybe it was a.
Well, he said exercises right to buy it, so.
So, was it ring that Freckleton had that this guy bought from?
Apparently, he leased it and then exercised an option to purchase. And I'm just going from this email.
Yeah.
So, when the guy voluntarily enters into an option to purchase agreement and a lease agreement, and then when it's exercised, he's complaining because that affected, I mean, that's, talk about self-deprecating situation. And then you're complaining.
Yeah. If that's what happened, it's, it's, that's what it seems like, but I don't, I don't. And even if it's all cor- I don't see how it's, I mean, where's the relevance? You go to the next page and then he talks about how he built. I did not build and then cry hardship. So, I guess that's, you know. That's a criticism of the current application and he's entitled to make it. I guess that one, I understand.
The last, the last one is the one.
That doesn't mean someone else.
Yeah. The last one is the one that, you know, "I'm under considerate family pressure to sell and move out." But if the, he wants us to, if we do grant it, he wants to say that the next buyer has the right to tell them to move it, tear it down and move it. We can't do that.
We can't do it that way.
I mean.
Well, ironically, he says it doesn't currently cause him any trouble.
I know. But I mean, you can't say, "Okay, you can build it, but if this guy sells his property and the new neighbor goes, 'Gee, I don't like it,' you gotta tear it down?" Do we do that, Pete?
If it runs with the land.
I'm sorry, I'm reading the question.
He want, I'm sorry.
Did you see Mr. Freckleton's email?
I'm looking at it now.
Look at, just look at number two.
Yeah.
And that's what Joe's asking you about. Can we, can we somehow grant the variance that ends upon the say, "Oh, I know, we've dealt with that issue running with land before."
You know, unless he's comparing board action on an application he made and board, as opposed to board action on this one, I don't see where it's relevant.
No, I agree.
He's not talking about something we did as a board on his application.
But in any event, so the question that he says the building could have easily been cited to meet the setback requirements, that's, that's his, he's entitled to express that opinion. And I think we should explore that, obviously. We will, so.
Yep.
All right. Is there anything else on this one that?
I mean, I'm guessing by the aerial photo that it was sitting right here on the parcel for it, because I don't think that structure was there before.
It's in back, right?
Well, it isn't back now.
I think it was down here.
Okay.
I think it was out here.
So, yeah. Why don't we, we still have plenty of time. Why don't we continue then with the history? So, Mr. Sleeman exercises a lease clause, buys it, and then it's in 2002.
I think bought an additional piece of it.
Okay.
Because when you look at the survey map, you can see that there's, the SBL number has a point and then three extension numbers on it, which means that it had been subdivided or resubdivided three times from the original parcel that was a .10, I think it was on the, on the map. Yeah. Because it was a dash 10 and it ended up being 10.302.
Wouldn't it have to join his existing piece? Like maybe over here or?
Well, I, I think what may have, the piece that may have been part of that contract was this out here.
That was my thought, or this section was clear. Because if you had Christmas trees, maybe you actually lost those Christmas trees when that portion got sold.
I think it was, it was out there that he had lost.
Especially with the hedgerow being there.
But I mean, if he's still on that, what a crazy piece of property that would have been. Go straight back, take a little.
Oh, I got done though.
Yes. Sure. Agricultural, you know, endeavors, whether it be, you know, cultivating for field crops or, or in his case.
But then he'd landlocked himself on that piece a lot almost, unless it was his property. Could never be sold.
Right.
Okay. So, at the time Sleeman buys, we have a metal barn. No, that's okay. I just want to get through this history. We have a metal barn.
Right.
And then Sleeman buys and then Sleeman puts on an addition at some point.
To the south, yeah.
Any idea when that occurred?
I think that was early 2000s.
Okay. Okay. And he came to this board?
Yes.
And asked for a variance?
And he received approval to have that.
That's the piece in.
Before he built.
Oh, yeah. Because it's like two foot, I think, something like that. It's not.
About two to three feet.
Do we, do we have that, Rizzo?
Yeah, I believe that's this one here.
Okay. Just would be nice to review the rea- well, who was on the board then?
Yeah. Well, it was everybody except for.
Me, I'm sure.
Well, I should say, I'm sure.
Dan, Mike, Carol. It was then Don and Terry.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, so you guys may want to take, it's up to you. Anybody can certainly.
Well, it's the piece Danny with the red letters in it, I think.
Right. Okay. But it's, you know, similar issues. All right. So then what happens after that? Somehow the applicant?
He, he came under medical distress and the family ended up, it was my understanding, the family sold the property and Kristen came up and purchased it. And she's been operating since 2010.
Since how many years?
Okay, ten.
Okay. All right. And, and how did we, so how did we find out about this?
John.
John. Any idea how long, well, I suppose.
That's what I was going to ask. How long has it been there? Do we know?
I think in conversation with Kristen, it's been there for a year.
Oh.
A year and a half.
And he just reported it recently. Okay.
And he's, and as far as you know, any complaints or concerns or just?
From anybody else out there? No. No.
Well, I mean, it's a great year. I mean, I mean, I can't see it from his house. You can't, you can't see it from it.
Yeah. I, it, well, I think the only person who may be able to see it is, is the lady who was in for the chicken variance two months ago.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions on this?
No.
All right. And then we have, even though I did my best to fog up the matter, we're all set for the September meeting. When I said, "Oh, that Saturday is good for me."
We didn't change anything.
Because Carol did call me and let me know that there is, this building is going to be used for a primary. So, it's good that it all worked out. So, September 15 is the date. Good. Anything else for this session?
No. I just want to talk about the applications for.
Well, we can do that. We can do that after. We can pass that around and people can see it if they like. But we'll stand in recess now for about 12 minutes and start the public hearings. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penn Field Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting will take place in two parts. The first part will be the public hearing. We will ask the applicant to come up to the podium and give us a name and address and then explain to the board why the relief requested should be granted. Once the applicant is done with the presentation, board members will likely have some questions. And then we'll invite anyone in the audience that cares to come up and speak about the application to do the same thing. Come up and give us name and address and then speak about the application. After the public hearings are adjourned, we'll take a brief recess and we'll then reconvene in the back of the room to deliberate on tonight's applications. Members of the public are certainly welcome at both sessions, the public hearings and the deliberations, although the deliberations are generally time reserved for conversations amongst board members, board members with staff and counsel, occasionally with the applicant, but only when we really need to clarify something because the hearing had, has been adjourned at that point. If you, again, you're, you're welcome to stay. You don't have to. If you want to leave and you want to find out what action the board took on a particular item, you can call tomorrow and they'll let you know. We have what I would say is a light agenda tonight, so it shouldn't be that long. But again, if you want to leave, feel free to call tomorrow. Every month, I like to point out, as do the other board members, that we think the town has a very good practice of notifying neighbors that live in near applications, that the application's been filed and it's going to be heard by this board. And the town does that so that people are more fully informed of their right to come in, come in and speak about the application. That's what we want. Helps us do our job. We think it works well. And the town does this by sending out postcards to neighbors when you live within a certain distance, by posting the agenda on the internet, by posting it on the board out here, and by requiring applicants to put the, which many of you have done, I'm sure, put the signs out in front of your property so folks driving by can see as well. And with that said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, folks. Harold, may we have the first application, please?
Application number one. Jake DiMachelli, 24 Reginald Circle, Rochester, New York, 14625. Request an area variance from chapter 250, article 5.1-F of the code to allow garage addition with less setback at 24 Reginald Circle. The property is owned by Jake DiMachelli and is owned R-1-20. This is SBL number 108.09-2-3. This is application number 16Z-0033.
Hello?
Good evening. My name is Jake DiMachelli, 24 Reginald Circle. We needed addition to our garage. We need storage. That's why we're filing for a variance, to extend our garage to meet our needs.
All right. I just want to start out by saying you have signatures from eight neighbors here saying that they don't mind what you do there?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, I just want to put that in the record, so it'll be on file. What color are you going to have this?
Identical to the house, as close as physically possible. Shoreham Williams does a wonderful job to match anything that you have existing, so.
And the variance is not really very substantial, is it?
No. My home is bordered by arborvitaries. I got a natural buffer going all through my, that side of the house.
Okay. I was going to ask you.
Less the dairy, the dairy do a good job at trimming them, but.
Okay. So, there's trees all along the side of the house?
Yes, that's correct.
Side of your yard that the garage is going to be?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. How about the drainage? You're going to add a new roof. Will that affect any drainage in the area or anything?
No, none whatsoever. None whatsoever.
Explain how the drainage works. What do you do now? Do you dump it on the ground? Does it go in sewers?
No, it goes into storm sewers. It will be extended and tied back into storm sewers, obviously. It's a proper way to do the application.
Okay. And you're going to remove some bushes and those plants that are along the side of your house?
Just my shrubbery.
Okay.
Yes. The shrubbery's overgrown as it is. If you drove by in the last week, I removed some in the front of the house too because it's 25-plus years old and they get overgrown.
Yeah. And it's not really different than the area because there are other three-car garages in the area, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. That's all I have, Danny.
Any other questions from the board? Wow, excuse me. Nothing? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this application? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Application number two. Laura and Vincent Bobbin and family, 43 Sparrow Point, Penn Field, New York, 14526. Request an area variance from chapter 250, article 7.1-D of the code to a fence taller than six feet at 43 Sparrow Point. The property is owned by Laura and Vincent Bobbin and is zone R-1-20. This is SBL number 124.01-2-80. This is application number 16Z-0034.
Good evening. My name is Vince Bobbin. This is my wife Laura, my daughter Laura, and our daughter Kelly. And this is Mr. Novelli. He's going to be building the fence for us, assuming you approve it this evening. And by the way, thank you for your time and hearing our request. Last summer, we had a patio put on, it's attached to the back wall of our garage and extends out about 18 feet. This summer, on the patio itself, we had a hot tub installed. Also, the lot next to us, the home was built and it was finished, and the people have a deck and a patio that is visible from our patio. So, when we had the hot tub put on, we asked Mr. Novelli to come out to the home and help us design a fence. So, we thought what, what the height would be was probably going to be about seven to seven and a half feet. Now, this was because of the combination of the land, which slopes away from the patio in two directions. It slopes away from the patio to the west and it also slopes to the south, which is the back of our property. In combination with that, the patio is two, well, 14 feet, or 14 inches high because there's two steps to get up to it. Again, and that's the result of the sloping of the land for drainage purposes. So, when we realized that we, in order to have privacy, the, we wanted the fence, it's going to be like seven and a half feet at one end and at the other end, it's about eight feet because of the slope. The six-foot restriction, which we didn't find out until after we did some research about the codes that the town has for fences, we went out and Mr. Novelli helped us figure out where six feet is. And if I am standing on our patio, six feet is about here. So, obviously, the idea of the fence being privacy, to not see our neighbors or them see us, became an issue and why we put in the application. So, we talked to Jeremy and Meredith Dawes, who live in the home next to us, and they were all for the fence. They, they said that it would benefit them as much as it would us. So, we put in the application and are hoping that you'll approve it.
What's the approximate dimensions lengthwise of the fence?
Say it again?
Approximate length?
Oh, um.
25 feet.
Yeah.
25 feet?
23, 25.
25 feet along the side?
It'll, it will. It goes parallel to the patio, about four feet away from it, and it's the same length as the step of the patio. It goes, from the top of the patio, there's one step and then you go to the ground.
Okay. So, it's along the patio itself?
Correct.
Okay.
So, it's not near the property. Well, I'm up near. That's a, because we're on a cul-de-sac, that edge of our property is sort of a pie shape. So, it'll be, I didn't really ever measure it, but probably six feet from the property line at one spot and maybe 10 feet at another spot.
And there's another little section, is there not, in the front?
Yeah.
Perpendicular to the?
Correct. That's about four feet, I think.
Four feet.
Okay. And what's the construction? What material?
Fence will be made out of cedar.
Okay. And you're going to build it from scratch?
Yes, sir.
Any other design in the top or?
The boards run horizontal with a vertical everywhere there's a post and then a flat piece along the top, which is a little bit wider than the fence itself.
What's the, describe for me what the property in the rear? What's the characteristic of that?
The, at the end of our, well, the back edge of our property, it slopes up. It's about a 10-foot slope. It's a four-foot rise and about an eight-foot run. And then at the top of that slope is a flat area of which we own about six to eight feet. And then everything past that is all heavily wooded and it belongs to the country club.
Okay.
Or, it's not country club, the Chatterlake.
Right. So, and so this fence would only be visible to your neighbor on that one side?
The one neighbor, yeah.
Okay. And obviously, from the front of the road a little bit, but it's way in the.
Right. And I, we included a letter from the Dawes, you know, giving their approval of it that we submitted with the application.
I should have noted that too, for the record. Yeah, we have that on file.
It's also important to note that their house is set back quite a bit from the road, so their front yard is highly visible to our backyard. And that's one of the reasons we are requesting variance because we want, like, more privacy from that, from that visibility.
Okay. So, interestingly enough, if you had put a six-foot fence on the slab, on the patio itself, you probably wouldn't have needed a variance.
Oh, not at all. Right. If we had put it right up on the top of the patio, that would have been high enough.
But then we couldn't, the, the hot tub is only about one foot, maybe even less, from that edge of the patio.
No, I'm not saying that's.
So, we would have had a position.
I'm not saying it's possible. I'm saying it's visually, if you put a six-foot fence on top of the patio, which you're allowed to do, you'd probably have the same, you have more of a height.
Correct.
Looking at it from your neighbor's side, so.
Then I could not see over it.
Right.
Okay, that's all I have.
Anything else from the board?
Yeah, I got one. You talked about, this says a seven-foot fence. All of a sudden you were talking seven and a half foot, eight foot. I think I heard. Am I correct?
It's seven feet at the beginning, but because of the yard grade, by the time you get to the other end, it the top remains level. When you get to the end of the fence, it's closer to eight because of the grade of the lawn towards the back of the house.
Okay, do we understand that, Mike?
No, actually, I do not, so thank you for pointing that out.
You're welcome. Go ahead.
So it's seven feet from, from the portion closest to the road?
Right.
Correct.
At seven?
Right.
And then it's going to gradually increase to eight at the back?
If the remain, if the top remains level?
Yeah.
Because of the slope of the yard.
We talked about stepping it down so that it would be in sections, and that's okay with us, too, if that's preferable.
So either, either way is okay?
Yes.
Well, the concern for me is if, like, if they were six-foot sections of three or four steps, the tops of the last two sections closer, closest to the woods, I would still be able to see over them.
But is that really a problem from a privacy point of view, since that's not near the hot tub?
Well, you can see their, their deck is quite elevated. They, it's a one-story home, but it's a walkout basement, so their deck is eight, nine feet above the ground.
Is this the house with the conservatory?
Say it again, please.
Conservatory?
No, that's, that's the greenhouse.
Yeah, Mike, can I just?
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, again, I didn't raise this because I had a problem with it. I just wanted to make sure that you started at seven foot and that we understood. And I understand, you've got to keep it level or it'd look terrible. I mean, you can't slope it down a foot. So in order to keep it level, if you had to increase those panels, I would understand that. But usually, we grant just, say, a seven-foot fence in general, and that's all you'd put in.
Unless, just let me interrupt.
Yeah, no, you go ahead.
Unless you create a space on the bottom. I'm not sure how that would look. It depends on how the land runs, basically. You know what I'm saying? You could have a seven-foot section that's higher up on the, the post would have to be longer, obviously.
The post would be longer, because we want the fence?
And you measure the post, don't you, Harold?
Excuse me?
Don't you measure the post when you're talking about the height of the fence?
Generally, the standard that Andy uses, he'll give them about two to two and a half inches at the bottom, just so that it's not sitting in the ground.
Okay.
And as long as it's a six-foot-high panel for our traditional fence requirements, he's comfortable with it just because it's, you know, they get a five-foot, 10-inch panel as a special order.
Yeah, but this.
But we do give some on the bottom so that it can be.
So you don't measure the, if you have an eight-foot post with a six-foot section on it, you look at that as six feet?
Yeah.
Okay, so then you could do that.
Yeah, but the only thing is, Mike, I mean, you're talking about a foot under the fence, you know, I mean?
Right.
Three inches, four inches, eh, we probably wouldn't even see, and maybe let the grass grow. But you start going a foot difference.
Right.
That's going to look extremely, you know?
You'd almost have to see it, though, George, to make that determination. I don't know.
By the way, and not that I'm suggesting you do this, but we have had some applications, probably this year, where people have actually built up the, the yard.
Oh, great.
You know, built a little berm almost and then built a six-foot fence on top of it.
Well, if you saw that corner of our property and how it juxtaposes to our neighbors?
Yeah.
That was done by Mascot. They, they are awesome about how they landscape, or whatever you call that, what they do to the dirt after the home is built, for drainage purposes? Because like I said, their backyard slopes tremendously on both sides to be able to have the walkout basement. And so that's a pretty steep decline that was put there on purpose for drainage.
Okay.
I'd also like to comment on the seven-foot height. That was the height of the end closer to the street. That was what we thought we were wanted, okay? So when Mr. Novelli came out at Mr. Morehouse's suggestion to build that, what do you call it, model, that we put up in the yard for each of you to see, he put it up, it is at seven feet, but if you stand there, I can still see over it. So that's why, after the fact, we talked about being seven and a half feet at the one end. And I spoke to Mr. Morehouse and he said, "Well, in the," and I read it on your website where it talks about the things that we're going to go on this evening. It, he wrote it, so it just said the fence would be over six feet tall.
Yeah, that's, that's.
He didn't have a specific height mention. So that's why we thought not contacting all of you and saying we want six and a half feet at the end, at seven feet wasn't going to be an issue.
Okay. No, it's not. It's not. You're talking about the notice provisions and it wasn't specific, so that's not an issue.
Yeah, so we were aware of that.
Mm-hmm. Alright, anything else from the board? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this application?
Dan, I just wanted to clarify a moment. So are we looking at seven and a half feet at the tallest or eight? No, which one?
You mean the tallest part of the fence or the tallest part of the yard?
Tallest part of the fence.
So at the woods end, it might be eight feet tall.
Right.
So you're asking for a two-foot variance?
Yeah.
To be.
Well, on that part of the fence.
But it's, it's still is a two-foot. We don't go two feet and then, you know?
In other words, if we grant eight foot, you build it seven, you're still within the?
But you have.
But if the whole thing's eight feet, we may come and see you.
Right.
We'd be glad to have you.
Yeah, well, we're going to hold you to your, to your word that you're going to, because of the grade, it's going to be seven here and then eight there. You're not going to build an eight-foot fence all the way across because you don't need it. Okay. Alright, thank you very much, folks.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
You want to turn? Say something?
Application number three. Kristen Leary, 3476 Atlantic Avenue, Penfield, New York, 14526, requests an area variance from Chapter 250, Article 5.1-F-7 of the code to allow a building housing livestock with less setback at 3476 Atlantic Avenue. The property is owned by Kristen Leary and is owned RA-2. This is SBL number 110.04-1-10.303. This is application number 16Z-0035.
Hello, I'm Kristen Leary, 3476 Atlantic Ave., and we're here to apply for the variance for the two-stall barn that you see in the paperwork tonight.
Can you talk a little bit about the size of the barn and why it's, why it was moved or placed where it is now?
Yeah, the, the barn is 12 feet by 20. And it was originally a run-in shed, didn't have the doors. And we enclosed the barn so that we could store horses in the wintertime a little more, you know, safely and warmly. And the reason that we put the barn where it is is because, as you can see in picture number two, it comes right out to the back of the original barn. And so, from a labor standpoint, when we're cleaning stalls and watering the horses and feeding the horses, we're able to go right out the back of the barn and do that labor in kind with all of the other horses at the same time. And as you know, if we're farther away from the barn, we're looking at, you know, inclement weather, snow, rain, mud, and it just makes our labor a little bit more intensive, especially in the winter, when we're, you know, feeding and cleaning the stalls.
Sure. Can you talk about the north side and what's, what's behind the barn or that shed, or the structure there that would be closest to your neighbors? What's, what's, what's behind there, what, directly behind the?
The barn that's built? In picture number one, you're looking at the barn facing south, so the back of it's the north side. Mm-hmm. So the back of it, if you look on the next page, actually, that gives you a better perspective, you'll see that behind it is 55 feet of trees, pastures, and then my neighbors' back three acres of Christmas tree farm.
Okay, so it's a tree farm behind there?
Correct. And then behind that is Center Point Stables, and there's no, there's no buildings on Center Point, residents, there's no.
Take this one.
Do you have an extra?
Here, I got an extra.
Yeah.
No, no, I got one.
He wants you to put it up on the board.
Just for the cameras and the viewers.
I thought somebody needed it.
I don't know if I can reach.
Where's your help?
And I think you referred to him as your labor.
Right, my labor. And I was hopping.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's another one, yeah, and this is the other side, too.
There we go.
Okay, you got enough clips? There's one on the side.
Yeah.
No way I would be able to.
I told you it was worth it. You'd have to stand on my shoulders, Dan.
Talk about what's going to occur in the barn? Is that for hay storage? What's going to?
Actually, the only thing that we're using the barn for is, it's almost transient storage and inclement weather. So we have enough stalls currently for all of our horses. But there are times of the year where we are in transition, where we might be bringing horses in for training, or it, the weather gets really bad, because we have other run-in sheds that the horses live out 24/7 in, that aren't enclosed. But if we get a really bad storm, we wanted to have this stable as extra space for that situation.
Okay, so it'd probably be, it's being temporary, I mean, would it be safe to say, you know, 10%, of the year, it'd probably be used and probably not a whole lot more than that, when you think about inclement weather, or more, or?
You know, I would be safe to say?
25%.
A little bit more than that, yeah, just because I don't know how long a horse in train, like, there are people that have horses that live out around the area, and in the wintertime, they want to keep training for, for showing and things like that.
Sure.
And we have the indoor arena, so they don't have that. And so they'll bring their horse from like January to March.
Okay.
And so that's, you know, that's the kind of use that we use it for.
Sure, sure. How far, I know there are a lot of fenced and paddocks and back, how close are those to the property line compared to this building? Do they run closer to the property line, where the horses are out during the day? When they're out during the day, are they closer to the property line than this structure is?
Yeah, this, this, you can see this dry run here?
Sure.
That's a paddock.
Okay.
And so, of course, that butts right up to the neighbor.
Okay.
So, you know, they can, they can pet the horses. And then this is all my property back here. This is all buffer on these sides. So the only place that the horses really do run up against the neighbors is this run right here along that Christmas tree farm.
Okay, and they're out, they're?
Every day.
Normally, okay, so that's not a unusual occurrence to see horses right at, at the property line?
Right.
Doing what horses do?
Exactly.
Okay. And then your property, it's a very long, narrow property that does a 90-degree turn. I was looking, and actually, I'll make a note of it, that there's only about 20% of your entire property where this, by code, could sit, based on the 100-foot setbacks that are, that are required. And the only reason the 100-foot setback is required is because it does have livestock could, could be inside it. If you built a structure of a, of a shed or anything like this that anyone would have at their home, it could go much, much closer. So it's purely because you have horses in there some time of the year.
Correct, yeah.
And they're already, our horses.
And they're already our horses within that 100-foot, every day.
Right.
Yeah.
Alright. I think that's all I have. How long have you owned the property?
Five years.
And for that entire time, have you run this operation there?
Yes.
Any, any issues, any problems, complaints?
Nope.
Alright. When did you build the, this barn?
We built it in October.
Of?
Last year.
Okay. And, and for whatever reason, you didn't get a, well, let me ask you, you didn't, you didn't come in and get a permit?
No, because it, it didn't have doors on it originally, and so unfortunately, I was ignorant to the code that once you put doors on it, it becomes a livestock holding structure as opposed to an open run-in shed.
Okay.
So I guess I'm, I'm, I didn't know to ask for permission, but now I'm asking for forgiveness.
Yeah. When did you put the doors on?
We put those on in the winter, one thing, when, when it started to get, you know, the weather started to get a little more rough.
But that was not your original intent?
No.
Okay. Alright, any other questions from the board?
Just one. You put the doors on because if it snows, it would just pound the horses inside, correct? In other words, it would snow inside and that's what you're trying to avoid by putting the doors on?
Yeah, well, yeah, mm-hmm.
Okay, it's obvious to me.
Yeah, and again, and I think it goes back to also the people that were bringing their horses in for the training for the winter. They were expecting a, a higher level of, of care for the horse.
Yeah.
And protection.
What would you have done if you hadn't had this built, this two-stall?
Well, we were, we were keeping the horses in the indoor arena. But the problem with that is when you have strangers' horses coming in, they might not get along. So you kind of want to keep them safer and more, you know, separated.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this application? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Alright, that was the last application, so the public hearings are adjourned. We'll take a brief recess and, by brief?
Really brief.
Three minutes, and reconvene in the back of the room. Thank you all very much. Are we sure about that, Joe? We will open up the deliberative session now, and we will go to number one.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that this is a type-two action.
Okay, so, and you, neg that. Alright, we have a second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay?
And I'd like to make a motion that we accept this, or grant them the variance. You have a lot of people that are going to see it but don't care about it. It blends right in the area, and I think it's going to be well done, and it'll be an asset to the area, so.
I'll second that.
Alright, we have a motion to approve in a second. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number two, excuse me?
I'm going to move likewise that this is a type-two action, and no further action is required. Neg that.
We'll second that. All those in favor on the seeker?
Aye.
Aye?
Alright, my motion is to approve the variance, allowing a seven-foot fence from the portion nearest the house and going to the back and up to eight feet tall on the back end. I think visually, it's, it's not going to have a detrimental impact to the area. There's buffering back there. It's definitely, there's definitely a good reason why, because though it's seven to eight feet tall, from looking, from the outside looking in, it doesn't, you know, when you're on the, on that hot tub, you probably got three feet of clearance to the top. So it seems to fit in well, and I, it's, it's also not that long a fence, a small portion of the property, so.
I'll second it.
For those reasons, I would approve.
Alright, we have a motion to approve in a second. Any further comment? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excuse me. Number three.
Let's see, motion declared type-two, no further review.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, declare a type-two action, and a neg that, and a second on that. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I'll make a motion to approve the variance. It's a very minimal-sized structure for the size of the property. Takes up less than a tenth of the property, actually, less than a hundredth of it. The way the parcel is shaped, it's a very long, narrow property, so it's difficult to put a structure on most of the property, actually, that would be within code. And for a business standpoint, for them to have things close together, it's a lot easier to maintain, and for the safety of the horses and the animals on site.
Oh, go ahead, Carol. Carol, second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. I would just add that she's been on that property for several years and done a very good job with it, running it well without any concerns or complaints.
And the structure's been there since the fall.
Absolutely.
And if you're going to bring that up, we also had complaints from prior owners that.
The way that, that was run that.
Before that, so she's really made significant improvement on this overall operation.
Alright, a motion to approve in a second, or actually, two seconds, I guess. Sort of like a closed call in the Olympics, right?
I pulled back, I'll be.
Okay, alright, so, any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, anything else? We don't have any?
Thanks, guys.
You're welcome. Nothing further on the agenda? Okay, well, then we will stand adjourned. Great job tonight, folks, everybody. We appreciate it. Have a good night.